Well, the committee of the whole meeting, March twenty fifth. Call to order. We acknowledge Athabasca County is located on First Nations Treaty Six and Treaty Eight, traditional territory. We respect and honor all First Nations, Maybes and Inuit peoples' connection to the lands, their history, language and culture. And thank you for joining us. Guess we'll move on to, to the approval of the agenda. Counselor Cromwell.
Thank you. I would like to move six point one to immediately follow after our delegation and then approve the agenda as amended.
So we have a request to move six point one to the why? Guess we're is there, uh, is there any issues with moving six point one immediately following the delegation?
We don't normally shift things around. I'd like to split the question. I don't understand why we'd want to move stuff around.
I guess, I guess we'll split the question. Uh, was quest to split the question. So on the, uh, moving six point one to immediately following the delegation, uh, all in favor? It's five post. Three. So we're gonna move that six point one to immediately following the delegation. And motion on approval of the agenda, all in favor? Mister Gerlock, did you vote?
I did.
Okay, so that would be eight and oh. Motion carried. Approval of the minutes. Three point one, any discussion?
Revolve.
Motion to move.
Motion.
Yep.
So any other discussion? So calling the question. Uh, approval of the minutes. All in favor? Motion carried, eight and oh. Delegation is, uh, at, uh, at ten AM. So I guess we'll move to, uh, six point one, uh, page fifty of your agenda. I guess we'll start, start this discussion regarding the water rates discussion.
I guess, oh. I thought I heard the request was to move it to immediately following the delegation.
Oh, okay, okay. So we'll go with the five point one. I guess we'll start with the C, uh, updates from the we'll start with our first update. Five point one. C A O update. So Councilor Anderson.
Um, the under legal, it, uh, alludes to a drainage matter. I'm just wondering if that relates to a file that we had previously been briefed on maybe a year and a half ago? Like it's, it's a pre-existing one. It's not something new.
It's an existing file, Mister Chairman. I may have given you a brief update in closed session on it recently.
Okay. Any other, uh, any other discussion for the C A O? Anybody else? Counselor Anderson?
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session so we can have just another update on that file.
Go into closed right now? Okay. We have a motion on the floor to go into closed. All in favor? So it'd be four, five. Vote again, please. One, two, three, four, five, five, uh, four and against three. So huh? Oh, I, okay, six and two. Well, we're gonna go into so I guess, uh, any other uh, any other questions to the, or C A O regarding his report? I just, uh, have wonder, uh, I know in, on Friday, uh, there was a meeting regarding with, with Island Lake, uh, Waterline Advisory Committee. How did that meeting go? Everything go fine or?
It was a, a good meeting. It was just, um, uh, it was time to bring everyone up to speed on where we are and introduce our new project management team to the, to the group. And so they're they've taken the ball and they're really running with it. And we're gonna try to make some progress here. Real quick.
Okay, perfect. And Summer Villages were all happy.
I hope so.
Okay, perfect. Yeah. Yeah. Sorry, but I couldn't make that meeting, but, uh, but, uh, thank you very much for the update there. Okay, I guess we will move on to if there's no other questions regarding C O, uh, we'll move on to Infrastructure Services Department update. Now I see Mister Morton isn't here. So do we wanna wait until he comes or? Okay, okay, so Councilor Chamsik.
I have a question. Uh, under construction, the county, uh, signs, um, out of curiosity, when are we gonna be looking at doing the Highway sixty-three, um, Athabasca County sign? For replacement?
I I have no idea if that was out of previously budgeted item. Is, are these the large signs that, uh?
The phone core signs that
Okay, so, um, I didn't even hear that, um, that that was a budget item for twenty twenty-five, but we could, I could look into it and see.
Thank you.
Okay, any other any other questions from anybody regarding the infrastructure director report? Uh, I have one. It's just, uh, contracted brushing tree cleaning on the south, the, on, on page twenty-eight, on the south side of Paxton Road between Range Road two fourteen and two eleven. To remove the vegetation was completed the first week of March, um, was I guess I'm just wondering what, what, why that, that tree clearing went on in there. It's such a wide right of way already. I was just wondering why that tree cleaning went along in there.
Miss Chairman, as I recall, um, this is related to the, uh, drainage event that we had in fall of twenty twenty-three um, in November. Um, and one of the mitigating factors that was, uh, suggested by, uh, Public Works was we need to do some brush and cleanup in those rights of way. And that was the first one chosen. Recommended.
Okay. Good, Councilor Anderson.
Thank you. Note that construction of the old Collington Bridge. Old Collin, yeah, uh, is slated to start April first, which is fantastic news. I think they're, will make a lot of people happy. I was just wondering if we have a plan to communicate that to the public? So people are aware that that project is moving forward this year?
Uh, Miss Chairman, I know they're working on it and I just haven't seen what those communication plans are. That's a great, great point to raise.
Revolve.
Thank you so much. Um, and thank you for bringing up the bridge. I also had it highlighted and, and appreciate that, uh, that is starting. Just curious if there is an idea of, of what the completion date may be, an ETA on that?
Miss Chairman, I don't have that date.
Okay. Um, are we still bound by the environmental nine week? Okay, so that's something that can be considered for that for sure. Thank you. Um, with, with regards to operations, I just have a few, uh, questions there's out of, uh, for clarity. There was a hazmat assessment of derelict property, uh, report reviewed. Um, that's just one property. And, uh, we're probably not able to speak about that in
Miss Chairman, I'm happy to. It was one of our tax recovery properties that, uh, council had slated for demolition, um, uh, in or adjacent to, uh, Collington that we, um, and there's hazardous materials in the property. So it's, everything is complicated. So it, it became more costly and more complicated for us to knock this property over.
Okay, thank you. Um, the other item I was just looking for a bit of understanding, uh, for regulatory, uh, created and submitted applications for multiple boat, boat launch water act approvals. Is that just an annual thing that has to happen for boat launches or how, what is the reason? For the applications?
I'd have to get back to that, Miss Chairman.
Okay, thank you. And then the last item that I noticed was under the G I S. Um, it mentioned the twenty twenty-five dust control layer to be added. Um, so that's going to show up on our mapping where all the dust control is? And would, I guess, the public have access to it?
I'm not sure, uh, Miss Chairman, I'm not sure if that's going to be a public, uh, public layer or not.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion, uh, to the C A O regarding the infrastructure report? Seeing none, I guess, uh, from there, uh, it's just about ten o'clock. So may as well, uh, table this till, till after, after, uh, six point one, we continue on with the, uh, with the reports. So I guess we will break for a couple of minutes here and, uh, let our delegation in and, and we'll go from there. Back up here and we will welcome our delegation in from, uh, the, uh, Alberta Forest Industry, uh, we will introduce ourselves first as we go around and, uh, and then, uh, I'll hand it over to Mister Moore when, and when we're done, we'll start over on my right with Counselor Cromwell.
Good morning. Thank you for being here. Good to see you again. Gary Cromwell, foreign, far north, up to and including Brain App, Wandering River area.
Good morning, Joe Gerlock, have the south end of the Dugani, Division One, Rochester.
Good morning and welcome. Thank you for being here. I'm Tracy Holland, which is Counselor Division Five, as well as, uh, Reba Athabaski.
Good morning, Rob Mintz, Division Eight, Up Tis Lake Island, Lake Erie.
Good morning, Camille Wall, Camille Wallack, Division Nine, uh, north of the river.
Morning and welcome, Division Seven, Kelly Chamsik, Grassland, Atmore, Prosperita areas.
Good morning, Brian Hall. I live in Division Four.
Morning, Ashton Anderson. I reside in Division Three, which is the Boyle Castle area.
And I'll probably take over from here, I guess, uh, uh, sitting next to Counselor Anderson is Jordan Scheckelberg. And, uh, commu-, uh, yeah, communications coordinator. Sitting beside him is Tommy Prelude. Plerred. Recording secretary. Sitting, uh, uh, Mister Bob Beck, uh, C A O for Athabaski County. Behind you is, uh, Shawnee Ambly, uh, Director of, uh, Corporate Services. And beside her is Krista Wilkinson, Director of Community and Protective Services. And Mister Moore, take it, uh, take it from there. Thank you.
Yeah, um, yeah, thank you very much for, um, for having me here. Yeah, so I'm, uh, Dan Moore. I'm the Director of Environment with the Alberta Forest Products Association. Um, uh, prior, uh, I've been in this role for about a year and a half. Now, now, prior to that, I, uh, I worked at a pulp and paper mill in the White Port area for thirty-three and a half years. So, uh, so I just kind of recently transitioned to the Alberta Forest Products Association. So the Alberta Forest Products Association, for those that don't know, um, we are supported by the, um, uh, forest products industry in Alberta. So, so the sawmills, the pulp mills, the O S B, all those folks and everything, they, they, um, um, they pay us a fee and we're an association that lobbies on their behalf. Um, they're provincially, federally, for everything from, uh, regulations, trade, forestry practices, land management and, and all of that. So, um, bioenergy and, uh, engineered wood products. So we're, uh, we're involved in all facets in Alberta of the forest product sector. And today I want to talk about, um, what's going on in the world in terms of the pressing, uh, uh, trade challenges facing our sector and, um, particularly with softwood lumber. And duties and U S trade barriers, global competition and, and talk about what we can do to, uh, um, help safeguard Alberta's forestry industry for the future. So, um, the industry here in Alberta supports over thirty thousand jobs across Alberta. Um, uh, most of those are in rural areas where forestry is the primary employer. And in addition to direct employment, forestry contributes to transportation, construction, engineering, manufacturing. And so there's that ripple effect from, from having forest products in, in the communities. And so right now the stakes are high. Um, Alberta's forestry sector contributes significantly to the economy. Um, yet we're at risk, um, due to factors beyond our control, trade tariffs, regulatory hurdles and a shifting global, um, trade landscape. Um, so the big elephant in the room is trade barriers and tariffs on Canadian, um, uh, softwood lumber. Um, approximately fifty percent of the lumber that's produced here in Alberta, um, makes, makes its way to the U S, making you know, trade with the U S, a key component of our industry's success. We're, we're exporting lots. They need our lumber despite, uh, uh, what we've heard from, um, uh, one person. That they need our lumber, um, uh, they, they just don't have enough or the capacity to do that. Um, the rising trade barriers threaten our ability to compete and grow as an industry. Um, these factors risk the livelihood of, of, of this community and other communities in Alberta. So the current situation, um, uh, Canada's forest industry faces a fifty-five percent tax on products. Uh, Trump announced a twenty-five percent tariff on all Canadian goods, um, which I guess we'll see next week how that, uh, what happens there. And a recent increase in duties on lumber from fourteen percent to nearly thirty percent. It's quite, quite significantly. It's quite significant and very hurtful to our sector. Um, so what we're trying to do is, um, um, we're trying to get the provincial government. They've been very supportive, but we want to keep pushing the provincial government and later I'll talk about the federal government to, um, uh, to help us, um, you know, look for solutions and, you know, get us, get us through this, but also, um, after this is over, make sure that we're set up for the future. So we're not, um, um, we're not so exposed to what's going on, uh, with the U S. Um, the government has, you know, it has a critical role, role in ensuring our forestry sector remains strong despite these challenges. So, um, so the one thing is number one, advocate for Alberta forest products in the U S. So one of the most important steps is strong advocacy at the federal and international levels. Alberta needs to push back against unfair trade practices and communicate why these tariffs hurt both Canadians and Americans. Um, lumber duties are a tax on U S consumers. Uh, the U S housing market depends on Canadian wood to keep prices stable. And I've seen numbers as high as, uh, um, you know, for a build, uh, in, in taxes, um, you can, whatever the value of that house is, you can see the, the, uh, with the lumber tariffs on that the cost of that build could be anywhere from ten to twenty thousand dollars U S for people having that was built. That's pretty significant and hurtful for, for Canadian, uh, for American consumers. Um, the U S can, uh, cannot produce enough lumber domestically. Um, even with the terrorists, they still need our products despite, again, what we've been hearing south of the border. There's, um, um, you know, unless they have a plan to cut down their national forests, um, which I don't think a lot of people want to do. Um, they simply don't have enough lumber or the capacity and it would take years and years to build out that sort of capacity. Um, Alberta's forest industry supports thousands of American jobs. Um, pulp from Alberta is a key input in the U S paper and package, packaging manufacturing. Um, they, uh, import our paper. We produce, uh, paper here in, in Alberta and that's, um, uh, shipped south of the border as well. They don't have the capacity for their own. Uh, the forest industry in Alberta buys many products that are made in the U S, uh, including machinery, trucks, resins, chemicals, uh, um, and different technologies. And by working closely with the federal government, Alberta must push for a fair, long-term resolution to the softwood lumber dispute. Another part of the solution is, and we need to ensure that Alberta's regular, uh, regulatory costs are kept low. Um, trade barriers are only one part of the challenge. Domestic policies also impact our ability to compete. Uh, British Columbia's high regulatory costs have led to mill closures and job losses. Alberta is already a leader in forestry competitiveness, but this needs to continue to be a focus. And, um, you know, for those that um, have kind of looked across the, um, uh, the Rockies into B C, it's been absolutely devastating there. What, what provincial policies have kind of led to in terms of mail closures. It's, um, it's, uh, it's not a lack of wood. It's, it's the cost of getting wood to facilities and processing it, which has really damaged that, that industry severely. Uh, we don't want to see that here. Um, competitive timber dues to streamline permitting will help mills operate efficiently and remain viable. Keeping costs manageable protects jobs and ensures continued investment in Alberta's forestry sector. Uh, one thing I liked, um, kind of in today's world and an industry in general, just making a profit sometimes isn't good enough. You need to be making more profit than a competitor in another, another location. The investors, um, and shareholders follow, follow the, the, the returns. Um, one big drive and part of our office, we, uh, we, we have a couple of individuals that work with, um, uh, Woodworks Canada. And, and, um, and one big thing is just build with Alberta wood. And then one way to co- counteract the trade uncertainty is to boost domestic demand, encouraging more construction with Alberta grown and Alberta manufactured wood can re- reduce reliance on exports. Uh, a build with Alberta Wood Act would be a powerful policy tool to incentivize local use. British Columbia and Quebec have already implemented certain, uh, similar programs with, with, uh, a lot of success as well. Uh, promoting mass timber construction and engineered wood products can drive innovation and create new markets for Alberta lumber. Um, this building here is in, um, this is the Brock Commons. And it's a wood build, uh, eighteen stories student housing for the University of British Columbia in Vancouver. So, um, um, what I've learned since I've been at the A F P A is there's been this very deliberate drive and working with architects, but also, um, uh, people who write the building codes in terms of building taller structures and, and bigger structures using wood. And, uh, it's actually quite fascinating. Some of the, uh, products that, um, companies are coming up with in terms of doing big builds with wood. Um, one thing we're, um, uh, working on is advocating for federal financial assistance. So since twenty sixteen, ten billion dollars in duty deposits have been held by the U S Treasury. Um, it's all part of the softwood lumber, lumber dispute. And these are funds that rightfully belong to Canadian producers. This financial strain weakens mills, limits investment and threatens jobs. Um, so part of our advocacy is working, um, towards a federal financial backstop that could provide needed relief helping mills weather the current crisis until a long-term trade resolution is reached. Uh, Alberta must push the federal government to, uh, act, ensuring our industry gets the support it needs to remain competitive and resilient. Um, continue, uh, market diversification. There's been a lot of work in this, this area recently. Uh, we need to look beyond the U S and aggressively pursue the new trade opportunities. We need to grow in markets such as India, the Philippines, China, Japan and Korea. They offer, um, a significant potential. Um, we should be actively marketing its forestry products abroad and supporting industry participation and trade missions and international partnerships. Um, there was a trade mission last, uh, um, a few months ago, the, um, where our Minister of Forestry and some other folks from the Alberta government as long, as well as A F P A and some of our members went on a trade mission to Japan. So, and, um, um, so that, that sort of thing, we, we need to be actively pursuing and continuing to do. Um, and a diversified market approach reduces our vulnerability to U S trade policies and strengths and strengthens long-term resilience. Um, yeah, we don't want to be, uh, um, just exporting south of the border fifty percent of our product and we needed a better balance in terms of, of what we're exporting. Um, part of this though is, uh, we need to, um, make sure that we have reliable tran- transportation and transportation networks. Um, to just to move product and, uh, that, and that's one reason why the A F P A and members are active and support the community rail advocacy alliance. Um, the voice is participating, uh, participating municipalities have been valuable in this alliance. And I don't know if Athabasca County is part of that alliance, but it's, uh, it's part of, yeah, in, ensuring the trains stopping in the right places and picking stuff up on time. So um, another thing we're, we're looking for is Another thing we're, we're looking for is implementing a, a forestry manufacturing tax credit. Uh, to remain competitive, we need innovation and investment in value-added forestry products. A forestry manufacturing tax credit would encourage companies to invest in new technologies and products. Um, this could uh, support initiatives like bioenergy. Uh, engineered wood and high-tech forestry solutions, securing Alberta's place as a leader in sustainable forestry. Uh, this tax credit has already been proposed and then um, now, you know, we, we need the uh, uh. We need some action on that. And um. Alberta's forest industry, it's, it's strong, it's um, it has been strong, it's been resilient, when you look at um. Other jurisdictions, British Columbia, Ontario, Quebec, um, we've been um, pretty successful compared to some other jurisdictions. We need to uh, um, uh. We, we just need to keep it that way and enhance that and amplify that and make it stronger. So a strong advocacy, smart policy decisions and continued support from municipalities. We can overcome these challenges and secure prosperous future for, for our communities. And we were asking, um, the, the one specific ask that we have. Um, for Athabasca County is we would like a letter of support sent to the premier um. Alongside with advocacy for, to the local um, Member of Parliament. So that's, that's our ask. And thank you for your time and um. If anybody has any questions, I don't know how much time's on the clock for me right now, if I overran or not, but.
Oh, no, no, uh, if there's any questions for sure, thank you very much for uh, for your uh, presentation. For Athabasca County, uh, forestry is very prominent in our, in our midst as. As was over Woodlands County and, and. All the counties in northern, northern Alberta is uh, extremely, extremely important, so, so thank you very much for the presentation. Um, is there any questions for Mr. Moore? How's our girl look?
Yeah, you said with uh. There's a ten billion dollar. That they're holding, is that since two thousand sixteen, is that what re- is represented by the thirty percent?
Yeah, that's part of the softwood lumber holding and, and I'm, I'm not an expert on the softwood um, lumber, but that uh. Um. I think, I think the uh, I think that rate kind of changes sometimes over time, it's in the news, but. The US Treasury Department, that's, that's our money that, that they hold, so it's, it's separate, it's different than the tariff is my understanding.
It's a car vote from the free trade agreement.
Yeah. Yeah.
Also, I don't know that it's a car vote or an ignoring of the free trade agreement. Um. In your economic analysis, then, do you have a guess on how elastic the demand is for Canadian wood in the US?
How lasting it is?
Elastic, like how sensitive are they to price changes?
Um.
Like, if, if the price. Goes up by fifty percent, what do we think will be the impact on demand?
So there's builders associations in the US, so US building associations are, are concerned that. There could be slowdowns, right? And, and that, that just results in, in higher prices and results in an issue with housing demand. Um, um, that. You know. How, how flexible are they in that? Um. You know, I think there'd be pushback if housing prices are going up instead of down. Um, it's difficult to see how the consumers are gonna take that over time, when they know that the solution could be Canadian lumber. So US home building associations are very strong advocate of Canadian lumber in the US. They are a very strong ally, they want to see all um, softwood lumber duties and tariffs eliminated. It's the um, the lumber producers in the US. That are um, um, have, have the ear of, of Washington and their lobbying efforts. So it could be um, you know, would, would demand fall over time, um, I think short term, but they need to build houses.
So then, do you, do you think that will cause a, a. A decrease in US demand means an increased supply here, are you expecting prices in Canada to decrease over the near term?
I'm, I'm not sure, but what the, you know, Canadian demand is, is um, uh, you know, there's. We'd love to ship all our lumber with domestically. And the um, the, the short of it is, if we can't get lumber down. South of the border, then facilities will be shutting down. So this is about jobs and, and cash flow for companies, like it's a, it's a serious threat. We, if, if they're not taking it, and if we don't um, uh, we don't have other markets to go into, then there will be. Facilities shut down. And that's gonna hurt whoever that is, I don't know who. But that will hurt, and that's the same, that's just not for, for lumber, that's for Paul, that's for paper. Um, this is a very, very, very serious thing for our sector. Yeah, this isn't um, um. Yeah, this, this is uh. Threatens our existence or a good chunk for our existence for a lot of companies.
Thank you for, you know, clearly forestry is a huge part of our local economy and I appreciate you being here.
Yeah, thank you very much, uh, any other questions? No, yeah, no, thank you very much, Dan, um, I've had the, the uh. We've worked together on another, uh, Dan is a chairperson for uh, Athabasca Watership Council and that and uh, and uh. It is great working with you and that, and thank you very much for advocating for the.
Thank you and thanks for the opportunity, it's um, yeah, tomorrow I get to do Woodland Scouting and, oh, sorry there.
I just wanted to ask, what's happening since two thousand sixteen, that's nine years that this situation hasn't been resolved? Uh, with the, the duties they're put on. Why isn't something happening there, is this gone in perpetuity or?
That's uh, that's a great question and, and, and I don't have a great answer.
Yeah.
Or, or much of an answer, it's um. Uh, number one, it's kind of out of my area of expertise, but it's just this um. Uh, like I said earlier, a lot of the lumber producers and, and the US have, have the ear of Washington. So they're, they're obviously they're advocating for jobs in their communities and some of the lumber producers see. Uh, Canadian lumber is a threat to their business because we're competing. So um, um, so they're making it uh, uh. As hard as possible for us to. Make a decent profit. So they're, we're just being punished for making money and part of it is the, in the US, a lot of the lumber comes off of private land. A lot. Comes off private, Canada comes off crown land. So they view that as a, uh, with the timber dues or the um, of the stoppage rates that they, they have because we don't own that land. That they view that as a subsidy. And that's, that's been a big, a big sticking point.
Those are all, I say the other, the other piece that plays into that, because yeah, there, I had a nice talk with an economist a couple of months ago about this very subject and. Is that, the, the US fails to recognize the growing that. Canadian trees take almost twice as long to grow to maturity as US trees.
Yeah.
And so they're, you know, they're kind of comparing through a lens that suits their point of view, but doesn't necessarily. Reflect fairly and they, but I think they view the Canadian government is subsidizing forestry because their stoppage fees are lower than what they would have to pay in. On private land, but. You know, it's like, like all things with US trade, they work the math to their advantage and then sing that argument.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, southern, um, yeah, southern yellow pine, like it, it grows quite quickly compared to a lodgepole pine here. In, in Alberta.
And just so we all are clear, it's not nearly as strong.
And a lot of politics.
Never a shortage politics.
Massive amount of politics when you start dealing with the two gov- two uh, governments, it's like, oh my lord. So, so thank you very much uh, for this presentation, we'll be uh, discussing this later on in, in the meeting and stuff like that. Uh, Mr. Moore and, and uh, we will uh, we will, we will be getting back to you.
Excellent, thank you very much. Thanks.
Yeah, and we'll take a, a five minute. I'm.
Oh, I guess we will, that was a great presentation, so we will reconvene and. And header eight to six point one. Uh, water rates discussion, page fifty of your agenda. So, I wanna thank administration for bringing us, bringing us along here. And. I guess to start us off would be. Probably now administration discuss, discuss their findings and what we need to discuss here.
Um, Mr. Chairman, council had asked for um. A range of different um bits of information, we've tried to provide it in the report, so I'm not gonna go through it all again. Happy to answer any questions and um skipping ahead to scenarios, we presented um scenarios of what. What uh rates might be if you chose to move towards this uh. Um, a non-cost recovery model, and so that's on page sixty-one. It's a very simple model, um, I'm not gonna guarantee its accuracy today. Uh, but it's pretty simple for you to understand, for every dollar you. You uh reduce your water rates by its, you reduce that revenue by the. Total number of cubes that you sell, and so that's the subsidy rate, so. One dollar is, uh, I think it's about ninety-four thousand is what we're budgeting for total cubes, so. Each dollar you would change, you would change your revenue by about ninety-four thousand dollars, it's as simple as that, it's not. Much more complicated, based on fixed costs for twenty twenty-five, that's. That's kind of what's in our report, but we're happy to answer any specific questions.
Okay, well, thank you very much, uh, one question that I did have was uh. These scenarios, scenario is one to three is based on a five uh cubic meter minimum.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, no, that would have taken a little bit more beyond my um accounting prowess, let's put it that way. Uh, this was just a straight flow through as if it was all charged per cube, so, just per cube.
Okay.
And the. Uh, some of the usage stats that we saw, I think we had that in one of the pages.
Yeah, you betcha, page six.
A lot of the averages were actually above that five cubes anyways, it looked like, so it may not have become. Much of a factor, but, so it, it's very. Minimalist calculation and we didn't take into account the minimum five cubes.
Okay, no, that's uh, that's good information to to understand there, so, okay, perfect, uh, we'll uh. Open up the floor for questions. If anybody has any questions or. Points of clarity as they want or. And. Same thing, okay, Reeve Holland.
Well, I won't be afraid to start, um, thank you so much for the report and for the information that you provided to us. Um, this has been um highly anticipated to to see and and hopefully, um, as it's been mentioned. In a prior meeting, um, we got it wrong, and so I'm hoping that uh at this time we will get it right. And uh, I don't have a problem uh putting it out there, we'll start, I guess, the negotiations now amongst council. Um, I'm in definitely in favor of of scenario three. Um, and I really appreciate that, I think that that is uh, uh, fair, um. It would be, of course, subsidized um across through general taxation. And uh, if I've calculated it out correctly, um, just based on these uh rough numbers. Um, we would be looking at over about ten thousand eight hundred rolls approximately twenty-seven dollars and two cents a year per. Roll, which um is uh. Pretty incredible considering some of the services that we do provide, for example, the multiplex and that kind of thing at a one point, point nine mil. Uh, it's quite a difference um per year, so I would definitely be in favor of of scenario three, uh, like you say, general taxation is subsidization. The only concern that I do have, um, and I've mentioned it in the past, is with regards to the transfer to reserves. I, as it mentions in the report, that there's a possibility of a uh surplus, which I would hope that council would be in agreeance to. Uh, transfer that surplus over to the restricted water reserve, um, which would then. Bring it up just about over two mil, which would be uh a great um opportunity to increase that. So, we went from twenty twenty-four about just over sixty thousand for reserves into this one in twenty twenty-five, it's showing a hundred and seven. Thousand two hundred, which of course always increases the cost um for water users, and so I would want to also. Throw it out there for uh consideration of council to possibly, as we're not completed our budget, um, possibly looking at lowering. That reserve uh contribution, considering we will be putting a surplus, hopefully, putting a surplus in. So there is that, um, you know, just looking at uh transfer to reserves, uh, some municipal guidelines suggest five to fifty percent of our operating revenues. Um, which this one at a hundred and seven two um is on the higher end of the fifteen percent. Um, so, it's just something for consideration for council to consider, I do understand, of course, we do have. Uh, consideration in the future that we need to plan for, et cetera, et cetera, but we also have underground services that are uh seventy plus years. Um, so, and I know we won't be replacing it all at once, um, that we would be looking at an asset management plan for that, so. That's basically where I sit, I'll throw that out out uh on the floor and um see where everybody else is sitting and and hopefully we'll have to continue that discussion.
Counselor Cromo.
Thank you, um, I do agree with most of that, uh, I definitely agree that scenario three. These are respectful, it is right, it is what our residents already pay for, there are a few things that. That they count as a tangible service that that municipalities provide and water is key. I completely agree with our minimum charge being five cubic meters versus uh the ten. But I would hold steady on our transfer to reserves, um. I think there's gonna be other changes coming through the county through budget, through assessment that are gonna make some of that changes where, where that can be recouped, but I'm. I personally believe that we have to keep at least that. Keep steady at that one oh seven two and build up that reserve. Um, it is our duty to also look forward to. The next generation and my children, your grandchildren, your children, and make sure that we have the funds locked away. In that restricted restricted water reserve for that problem, for that what-if when it comes through, I think. Reducing our reserve might be a disservice, I'm not looking at increasing it, but I think we have to hold steady and continue to. Add to that, I definitely agree with transferring. That surplus into that restricted reserve. But the only thing I can't get behind would be to lower that line item and reduce what we're putting into that locked up account.
Okay. Okay, any. Uh, counselor, Walik.
I guess my question to admin is, are we putting enough weight in reserves for the next? Ten years, like. It's not cheap to do this water line replacement, and as mentioned, like, it's very old reserve, like, water lines, we will have to start replacing them.
Yeah, um, Mr. Chairman, uh, as noted in the report, um. We don't know, because we don't have a long-term capital plan for our water assets, um, there's a bit of work that was done by the commission. Um, and we can rely on that a little bit, um, and. We suspect we're a little low, but until we can prove that, um, we're sitting at about two million dollars right now. Um, there's a lot of assets in the ground, so it wouldn't take much to spend two million dollars to fix, fix it up, but. Till we get a better plan, it's hard to say we need five or eight or or whatever amount in the bank for that, and it's. Um, we'd like better information.
Yeah, and 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 I guess if I could chime in there a little bit just regarding that, it is a capital plan. It it'll be planned, and and the commission did do a, a study through our uh asset and governance. Um. Study there and 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 our our. Assets below ground are are not in in terrible shape either, biggest thing that's gonna change that would possibly be if. We're gonna do a whole bunch of work on our road surfaces, then you start looking at doing the the capital end of that, so. But uh. I am also in agreement in number three, um, just due to the fact that. That uh. We need to start somewhere, starting a little bit lower and then then seeing where we're going the next year is is a lot easier than starting high and and going back to the same discussion again, so. Um, that's where I'm kinda leaning to, so, and. Anybody else? Discussion, counselor Anderson.
I could support. Uh, subsidizing water rates for residents. However, I can't support subsidizing water rates for commercial use. And. So it looks like, uh. From page sixty of our agenda package, that. Administration is able to separate out who our residential users are and who our commercial users are. And I just really think that we should consider two different rates for those people, uh. I think that it would take a little bit of that admin in the background to figure out exactly how it would work, but I think. That as council, we should consider that if we're subsidizing, that subsidy goes to the residents and not to the commercial users.
Okay, I think. Counselor, okay. Reeve Holland.
Thank you, so just curious, um, when we separate out uh commercial, um. How does that differentiate between the water haulers that are hauling to residents? To commercial, and the second item I would like to point out is commercial uh entities are paying a higher tax as it is. Um, so for me to attract economic development would be more important. Uh, in a slight uh subsidy of water, rather than penalizing and uh discouraging. Commercial uh economic development in our community, um. So, yeah, just curious how we would definitely differentiate water haulers as commercial water haulers that are hauling to residents for sister use, et cetera.
Mr. Chairman, um, Rick Ramory is just checking with uh Lorraine, who's our utilities clerk, she, she knows all about how people get billed. Um, and I believe she, she knows about this question and has a solution or can report how we do it today.
Awesome, thank you, so I'll just, I'll just hang off and wait for that.
Okay, any uh. Any other discussion regarding this?
Just to follow up. On page thirty-six of our agenda package in the. Ah, oh, the department update. Corporate services department update. The last two charts. Uh, the utilities chart, I mean, kudos to our team here at the county, the outstanding balances. Um, they're looking fantastic. But the accounts receivable is a lot higher. And. I just have an issue giving people a break on water and subsidizing the water rates. And then also letting them carry balances for months and months and months, like. Um, so I do think that we should take that into consideration that. That subsidized rate should only be for people who are. Um, I see, maybe within sixty or ninety days. Uh. Of payment, if they get beyond that, I don't think that they should get that break on the taxpayers' dime. Um. Any longer, so. And I don't know exactly how you would work that. But it would have to be written into the bylaws somehow.
Yeah, I don't know how that, how they would do that, maybe. See, uh. I see we have someone else joining us, so, so. On that question that uh. Reeve Holland had regarding how you separate, right, how you separate the commercial to the.
Right, so how would we differentiate in a commercial situation for uh water rates? With regards to those uh water truck haulers that are sending water to residents through cisterns and and that type of uh use.
So, right now. Sorry, so right now I don't think we can differentiate that, uh, commercial haulers are commercial haulers that haul water to residents, so. Unless we categorize them as a resident, residential user.
And, Mr. Chairman, right now it's all one rate, so there's no need for us to differentiate.
Right.
Could we in the future? We've looked at other places and there's a chance we could.
Okay, so in other words, they would almost have like a residential account. And then a commercial account, and then it would be almost like an honor system for them to punch in the right account for who, how they're purchasing. I I'm just throwing things out there, trying to figure it out how it would work, because my concern, of course, would be, is if we gave a commercial hauler. A higher rate than the residents who are, which are several residents who are dealing with with cisterns would not. Uh, benefit from the lower rate.
Mr. Chairman, we just have to consult with other counties that already do this, and just try to figure out the best system for us. Um, we do need some software upgrades at all our truck fields to start with, so, um. Fully implementing all these changes is gonna, there's gonna have some other impacts that we have to address.
Thank you very much.
We have to really get away probably from coin op at all, um, those systems are problematic for us, so. We're gonna have to move to an account system only or something to that effect, so there's some other impacts of trying to accommodate these, all these changes.
Great, thank you very much.
And if we go to a credit card system or something like that, be of, we don't have issues anymore with. With accounts receivable, it's, it's done, right, and and stuff like that, so. Counselor Cromo.
Thank you, just as a point of discussion, I know before. We were told that we were running out of uh users that we can add to the app system that. It was getting maxed out, and we had problem before trying to get new residents, I know, up in the Wander River area and account. Because there were too many. Accounts in the system that were not being used, and that's why they were sticking to the coin op. Um, just a little bit of information out there, by looking at the. By looking at the number of customers on page number sixty. Um. There's not that many accounts out there, but we do have a lot of people, especially out in in the north area that are out there camping and at. Different locations and haul their water and are not non-residents, and we're not able to get an account before because they were told as a non-resident. You know, you're stuck to coin op, uh, again, credit card might be the way to go. But how much do we have to put into infrastructure upgrades to to do that as well? And does that offset the maintenance of the coin op? Just a question.
Um, Mr. Chairman, regardless of the water rate scenario, uh, that sort of discussion was probably, probably overdue. Uh, so we probably had to come back and talk to council about, do, is it time to upgrade our system? Um, even if council didn't change the rates, you want to continue with the current rates. We're probably coming back to you to discuss about, is it time for us to switch, switch to the next generation of systems and. To better serve people and ensure our integrity of our system and. You know, um, yeah, we just spent a lot of time repairing our uh coin op system. To the point, you know, if it's down more than it's up, are you really servicing, servicing people?
I think there's more pros to. Advancing our system and to being able to collect money than it is cons, it's 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 uh. It, it would help administration in the long end of just being able to process this a lot, a lot faster and a lot of better and a lot. Just, just way better, so, I think we really need to be, to be looking at the, in uh advancing our systems along there, so. Um, but I'm in agreement with that, that 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 still doesn't affect the the water rate itself and that, and. Commercial users, uh, I, I. Most commercial users in Athabasca County that I can think of are actually. Are actually using it for people, um. Uh, some of it's for their business, but but there again, we do pay more tax and stuff like that, they, they pay more tax and that, so. I think if, I think a flat, flat rate across, we fought for a flat rate in in uh in the commission and finally got it through. Um, so I think a flat rate across for us right now would probably be the best scenario. Maybe to sell more water, and that's what the, through the commission, that's what we're trying to strive for, is we're trying to sell more water, so to penalize one entity. Because they use a whole bunch of water, uh, to me is not, uh. If they wanna pay for it, they wanna pay for it. Who are we to say that they, they shouldn't be using the water that what they wanted, the way that they wanna use their water? Anybody else, counselor Chamsak?
I do agree with the uh scenario number three, and you know, same thing when it comes to that uh commercial. Rate, I mean, um, for the water haulers that I know, and they do serve our residents as well. Right, and it makes it really tricky, and I don't think we're ready yet for those until we have those software upgrades to make those decisions.
Okay, go, counselor Hope.
I'm gonna start off and say that I'm really disappointed. That we've started a discussion with just picking one of the three options that shows up in the agenda. You know, we haven't really had a discussion about what we're trying to accomplish, it feels more like we're just driving to a goal that suits our personal needs. There is more than one scenario, and what we've got in the agenda, like, we didn't give admin clear direction at the beginning. And they've done good to provide us, uh, based on the direction, a couple of different scenarios, but it's really one scenario with three different price points. And so I feel like we're, you know, charging down the path of trying to make a decision without a data that's adequate or without a fulsome discussion about. What do we really want to accomplish with the water rates, what outcome are we hoping for, who do we wanna help and why? And you what, who are, we need to be transparent about who we wanna subsidize. And we've often talked about helping residents and affordability, and I agree with colleagues that. We didn't have adequate information to make the last decision we made, which, you know, in hindsight. I think at the time we've made the best decision we could, but with the benefit of hindsight, clearly needed more information, we can. We can do better, and we need to make some changes, but, but I really think we need to to slow down and start talking about, who do we want? But I really think we need to, to slow down and start talking about who do we want to help and why. You know, there are options for scenarios where we use the rate to influence and incentivize behavior as has been suggested perhaps. Uh that it's a discount that's applied when you're current on your bill. Um and when you're not current, you revert to a different rate that. Would uh provide a lot of benefits in terms of helping manage accounts receivable. And be fair to people who are doing the right things and for those who are. Maybe more problematic in creating extra costs and work while they, they would lose the, the benefit. You know, I look, I look at this and think, you know, to, to lower the reserve contribution is, is irresponsible and. Defers or maybe even rather um dumps. The costs on the future and for me, that's just not an okay course of action. So while we don't know what the maximum is, we do know that what we have isn't enough. And so I think all the proposals significantly understate reserve requirements based on the. Work that the commission has done, we know that we need it to accomplish the work that's gonna. Is projected to be required in the next five years, we need about two dollars a cubic meter. Going into reserves just to stay current with what's coming. And I don't think, uh given the scale of the. Long-term need that it makes sense to cut reserves, you're always better to put in a small amount over a longer time. Rather than defer to the future and force somebody else later to pay a big amount all, all at once, so. I would encourage us to think fairly carefully about how we handle the reserves and to um. To look at making sure we commit to it, and even if it's a matter of saying, we're gonna calculate a bigger. Reserve contribution in there. And increase what we acknowledge is the subsidy, at least then we have to acknowledge that. The subsidy is not two hundred ninety-one thousand, but. But uh three hundred and ninety-one thousand to kind of convert the rates they're here. If we back up a little bit and just look at consumers, either the individual consumers use about forty thousand cubic meters a year. Why not subsidize some minimum or maximum quantity and then? Create a, a baseline of pick, pick a number that works for you, eleven meter cubes, fifteen cubes. Give out, give out a break on that and then the heavy users pay more. After that, so create a, a two-tier system so that big users pay more. I, I just struggle with the idea that we're also going to subsidize industry and out-of-county users. I don't think it's accurate to say that um all commercial users pay higher tax, that, that's, we're mixing up two different arguments there. Commercial property owners are at a higher tax rate. Not all commercial users are property owners, not all commercial users are property owners in the county. So I. I think, I guess, it would be helpful for us to just have a conversation about what's our, what's our real target, who are we trying to help and what are we trying to do? And um, and you know, we should take some time to. To engage in, you know, kind of a roundtable discussion on. Is it, do we really want to subsidize in an unlimited way or do we want to kind of put a cap on it? So for me, none of those proposals are, are adequate, I, I would. Not be in favor of the status quo, but certainly not in flavor of an arbitrary and. Just blanket discount to everybody for an unlimited quantity of water.
I guess uh. With the community of the whole, we are actually having that conversation, so. Let's have the conversation, we're, we're, we're sitting here uh asking uh. Other counselors what, what they want to discuss. So if you want to discuss something like that, bring it up, it's uh Counselor Cromwell.
Thank you. Aside from the comments of, you know, doing what we want to do, what's good for us. We have talked about who we're trying to help and what we're trying to do, we have talked in length over the last four years about our ratepayers, how we can help them. How we can improve quality of life and make a basic necessity like water affordable. We have talked about economic development, we've talked in length about doing what is right, what is proper. For the taxpayers and the ratepayers, why are we trying to make everything so convoluted for administration by going, hey, we're gonna put a different rate on you? We're gonna put a rate on this, we're gonna add a penalty here, if you're a good boy, you can have a cookie, but if you're not, you won't. Let's do some common sense thinking, some common sense discussion and actually do what is right for the people of our county.
Okay, so. Reeve Holland.
Thank you, thank you um for clarifying some of those things, um. When I hear the words disappointment um in a conversation that we've opened up for negotiations, it's unfortunate, um. What I'm disappointed with is two years of profiting on water on our residents, so this was where we need to now stop. Redirect and quit making things so complicated. Um there are was um solutions to our concerns with regards to differentiating between commercial and whatnot. And as you mentioned, we update the software, we turn to a credit card uh situation and uh that limits. The accounts receivable saves everything in the long run, so in all honesty, those upgrades would actually save us money. Uh and possibly uh uh make a difference when it comes to reserves uh for twenty twenty-five in the past two years. We have put in just under a hundred fifty-seven thousand from the profit that we received, the surplus that we received in twenty twenty-three. Uh twenty twenty-four, we're looking at a hundred and three thousand, so you know, those, those amounts going into reserves wouldn't have happened. If we had not uh asked for that to happen, number one, two, they have definitely exceeded what we have, would have put in over the next few years. So for me to uh mention that twenty twenty-five's reserves jumped from six, just over sixty thousand from twenty twenty-four. To a hundred and seven thousand in twenty twenty-five, I think is uh once again becoming a little excessive, especially considering. We do not have the data to support it, so therefore I have no problem in uh discussing a responsibility. And that responsibility has definitely been shown in with regards to putting surplus reserves in. Uh and looking at these rates, uh once again, uh twenty twenty-five, as far as I'm concerned, the, the huge jump in reserves. For me, without that data is not necessary at this time, that doesn't mean what we look at it in twenty twenty-six in a different light. As I would recommend, we look at our annual, our water rates annually, not this blanket. Uh plus this, plus that on this particular rate, so for me, uh overcomplicating this is not necessary. It's pretty straightforward, um this isn't difficult to do, and of course, it's her residents. And our commercial entities that we need to be looking after uh in, in this uh community, not um penalizing people. For what is considered a human need and a human right to have clean water.
Okay, and uh, thank you for that and. Any, any other? Discussion regarding? Regarding this?
When do we think we'll have the data on um, or when, when would it be possible to have the data? On some of the other reserve stuff, if we're gonna make the change, why don't we? Make sure we have good data in front of us again and, and I think, you know, we do have some data already and we know we're not. Adequate, rolling things back doesn't make things better in the future, we've seen that time and time again, that's a problem we inherited when we started here.
Yeah, um, Mr. Chairman, actually, uh, uh Director Amblis. Got almost the final, final draft of a reserve policy. Our. Problem a little bit is what are the appropriate balances because we don't have long-term capital plans for all our assets. Um you'll see in, in this agenda, we've got something on building condition now. Um another month from now, we're gonna have a report on bridges, so. Bit by bit, we're building our plan, but do we have it all together? No. And that's our handicap, so uh in the interim, we're gonna have to pick some targets to work towards, knowing that. We need some long-term capital plans to justify what the right numbers are.
Yeah, so we're waiting on capital plans and then, then we can. I uh, I know the discussion on, on reserves is out there also at the same time, but I think our, our. I think our main, our main uh. Idea here is to try to pick a water rate, so actually administration can, can actually implement this water rate, that's, and, and plus put it into our budget. And, and for, for final budget, uh we can sit here and discuss this for another year and a year and a half and. We're still not uh. We're still not very much better, so let's. Let's uh. Discuss the actual water rate thing, I think. Counselor Gerlock.
I think we have to get to a better position than we're in now, and I don't think we can kick it around the table as much as you want, we're not gonna come up with the perfect scenario. So I think we need to get back to a reasonable starting position and gradually work on it and, and, and massage it and try and. Get it to a place where it does cover all the bases, but we're not gonna do it, we're not gonna do it all at once. I don't know whether we should be discriminating. Or pointing out the commercial users, they are taxpayers as well and they are paying. They're contributing significantly, I, I think a, a, a single rate. You know, if we're, if we're looking at six bucks, call it that, and then let's massage it, look at it next year, let's. Uh let's build out from there, but uh we can't solve it all and come up with the perfect solution all at one time, it's just not gonna happen. And again, too, when we look at. I mean, kicked around expanding into Long Lake area in order to get rid of more water or, or sell more water. And even opportunity, like are we gonna have different rates there or, or? I don't know, but we gotta have a starting spot, and right now where we're not at is not appropriate, so we need a new spot, let's not try and solve everything all at once.
Very well said. Very well said, so. So on that, on that note, where do we, where do we go?
Why don't we go to five bucks then?
We were uh. When we just, when we first started discussing this back in uh, I don't know, twenty twenty-two. And all of a sudden we come up with this new bylaw and, and, and it went in and. I'll let you know right now, I was not for that bylaw, uh I was not for that water rate and everything, and we were at what, five thirty-two? Five thirty-two a cube and uh looking at these scenarios. I uh, I look back now and I think, you know what? Uh if we go back to a six dollar a cube. Puts us back to where we possibly would have raised it and, 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 and. And to this point from twenty twenty-three, so. I totally agree with uh, totally agree with, with Counselor Gerlock on, on. We need to start someplace. To go below what we were looking at when we first started here as council is. It's completely off the, off, off the radar, but I can't even believe that that was even said, but. But uh to get back close to where we were, so we can actually start trying to figure this out. As we go forward, uh I think is a much better plan than starting. At five. Thank you. Reeve Holland.
Thank you, um, we could, like you mentioned, we can go around, around um all day long and um thank you for your wise words. Counselor Gerlock, you always have them. Um I think at this point, I would be prepared to um recommend to county council. That we have a minimum of five cubes, that we go forward with scenario three. Um and that we transfer our surplus from twenty twenty-four to the water restricted reserve. Um I don't think we necessarily need to. Um and, and this will be a question after. Uh for administration, if we, I know in the report it mentioned that the, the sewer charge would not be. Totally negatively impacted, it will be impacted, but it won't be um crazy. So I'm prepared to leave the sewer charge for this year at thirty-five percent, um rather than raise it, just to see where we are and once again have an annual review.
So it's uh. To. To get to county council or to.
Recommend.
Recommend to county council, five cubes. Scenario three.
Correct.
And transfer of the twenty twenty-four.
Surplus.
Surplus to. The uh. Restricted reserve.
Water reserve.
Water reserve. Okay.
And leave the sewer charge at thirty-five percent.
And make the sewer charge, keep the sewer charge thirty-five percent.
Of the actual monthly water billing, correct?
Right. And what we. Would be uh. Just regarding the Rochester sewer charge.
Remains the same.
Remains the same, okay. So. On that note, uh we have that. Marked down. Recording secretary, Kate, sounds good. Understandable. And so any discussion on that question? Counselor Hall.
So because we can't articulate what we want to do, I just want to be clear that this is just an arbitrary number that we've picked because we like six. And I want us to all be clear that we're subsidizing out-of-county industry. You know, we recently had a, an issue at a, a water fill station where an out-of-county user drew down so much water. We had to shut down the truck fill. As long as you're okay going to their, your ratepayers to say we're subsidizing business that does not work, live or contribute to Athabasca County. Um I'll be voting against this.
Counselor Gerlock, just quickly, that wasn't potable water, was it? Where was that at?
Wonder River.
I think uh to get back to where we had to shut down the uh truck fill station due to the fact that. There wasn't a lot of discussion between the contractor and. And the distribution end and what ended up happening is that would have worked out just fine if there would have been some. Some discussion and some working together, so. To say that they've sucked it down and they, they, they. Dismantled our system is, is.
I, I didn't say that, I said they drew, I said they drew it down to the, which means they took a significant volume of water.
Yeah, that's the. Yeah, and that volume of water would have been kept up if, if the communication would have been done between the two entities better. Cause uh. Yeah, and it's been resolved, they can, they can, so, so.
I, I think we're missing the point there, it's that a large volume of water is going to an out-of-county. Industry and business and that we're gonna subsidize the rate, like we can get into the, you know, why they shut the plant down, the reality is large volumes of water are leaving the county. On our ratepayers' backs, and I just want us to be super clear that we're, we're advocating to do that, and that's. That's a choice we can make, and I'm not saying it's an illegitimate choice, it's just a choice I don't support.
There's an economic driver there too, so, so it's just. Yeah, yeah, no, there is an economic driver in our county for, for where that water was going, because I do know, I, I have information on that, so. So uh, Counselor Cromwell.
It's unfortunate that. It appears that not everyone's understanding what we're trying to accomplish and who we're actually trying to help and what. In my opinion, the right thing to do is. But I definitely support the motion, I had it pre-written on my own a little bit differently than Madame Reeve had, however. You know, there's conversation around the table for what seemed like another way to hold up the process, to wait and ask for more information and ask for upgrades. And at what point are we gonna say, you know, we have to do what is good for the majority of the water going out, the majority of the people that use that system? And go, we're not gonna find an excuse to hold back again for another year, for another term. And go, we are actually here to help you and take care of you and allow you to have the water that we need. I definitely support the motion and I look forward to getting this vote done.
Okay, any other discussion on the? On the motion?
Like a recorded vote.
Recorded vote, you betcha. So. On that note. All in favor? We got uh Counselor Cromwell, Counselor Gerlock, Reeve Holland, Deputy Reeve Minz, Counselor Chamsak in favor. Opposed? We have Counselor Anderson, Counselor Hall and Counselor Wallach opposed. Thank you. I guess I can say the motion was carried. So I guess uh, I don't know, does anybody need uh? Four-minute break, we got no smokers in here, so. Okay. Okay, thank you. So we'll reconvene and we'll move on to, uh. To our reports, department update reports, uh. Thank you, Director, uh. Martin, for your, for your infrastructure, um, report. We, we went through that already. So just to give you the heads up. But, uh. I don't know if you had anything else you wanted to say on it, or it was a great report. Thank you very much. Uh, we'll move on to corporate services department update. So any, any, uh. Questions or discussions to, to the director? From anybody? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I want to say it's really exciting that we have a new website launching tomorrow. Um, great work to the administration team for getting that moving. I can't wait to be able to actually find things on our website. Um. The other questions I had regards to the TC Energy Build Strong. Uh, grant that we've been awarded. It says that we're purchasing three ESM eight sprinkler kits. Are those for wildland fire? Fighting or for structural? Protection?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, I am so sorry. I don't have the answer for that. Uh, do you happen to know that, Krista? Wildland? Yes. We, we will confirm.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just because the data sheet for those sprinklers, all the pictures are them set up on houses. So I wasn't quite sure what they were being used for. And then with regards to the Caslin vegetation management that we got the free grant for. Have we had a uh, open session grief on that topic yet? Or is there more information coming out about that project before it starts?
I'll have to get back to you on that.
Thank you. Um, it'd just be nice to be able to tell the public before they start cutting. Doing work and getting calls. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. And I agree with that because all of a sudden you start working in people's backyards. It's not really in their backyards, but it's right behind their places and they're going to want to know what's happened. So you betcha. Uh, any, any other questions? Counselor Cromwell.
Just a quick comment to the director. I always appreciate the amount of data and numbers that you provide in your report. So thank you very much for that.
Reeve Holland.
Thank you. Um, and I'll echo that. Thank you so much for these reports. Um, I think not only for us is this great information, but for the public as well to, to be able to log in and have a little look at the website. This is just fantastic information. Um, that I share regularly. Um, a couple, just a couple of things, just out of clarity purposes, more than anything, under information technology, uh, met with potential RMA service provider to manage mobile devices. Is that, um, just for aging mobile devices? Or is it also a better rate for monthly use?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, that's for both. Uh, we're, we're finding better rates and, uh, we want to refresh many of our phones. And, uh, we'll have a service provider that will make, will uh, control and manage all of that rather than us chasing it around. So it's, it's a service that we're, we're, is great reputation. And we're definitely exploring it.
Oh, fantastic. Thank you very much. I'm also, I'll just go through my list, um, in order of my page that I highlighted. I'm also looking forward to the new website and, uh, that's been awesome to hear that that's going to be launched tomorrow. Um, I also noticed the updated, uh, road bans on the county website. Um. Is that under public works or is that under featured news? I didn't get a chance to look. I'm sorry.
It's on the public works, uh, page.
Okay.
And I think, let me just double check really quick.
Thank you.
I can add it to both.
Uh, that'd be awesome. I appreciate that. So that everybody has a quick look to make sure that there, I've already had a couple of calls on road ban. So that would be amazing. Please and thank you.
Absolutely.
Um, under human resources, I think this is really awesome to mention that under recruitment, there are forty positions, seasonal positions. That's amazing. Um, and, uh, for especially in difficult times that we're facing, to be able to see that is, uh, pretty spectacular. So thank you for managing that and, and, and handling those things. Um. Uh, wildfire costs. So I just wanted to just double check and, um. Again, clarity more than anything, the difference between the actual costs and the grant claim is about a hundred and twenty one thousand and change. That is something that is, um, on the taxpayer and it comes out of general, uh, taxation.
Yes, I believe so. Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much. Do we budget? And I, forgive me because of course I don't have the budget in front of me, but do we budget for future wildfire costs?
It's in the draft reserve policy.
It is.
That we will establish a reserve for wildfire.
That's appreciated.
And it is current in the current reserves. It is wildfire in there as well.
Okay, that's great. Thank you so much. Um. And I think I have asked as well about the scope of work for Caslin. So I look forward to hearing that coming back. And again, thank you so much for your reporting.
Perfect. Thank you. Counselor Hall.
Uh, just two questions that relate to page thirty six. Are we still providing service to customers who are greater than sixty days overdue in their accounts? Receivable and are any counselors on the overdue listing?
Uh, to, to the committee and the chairman, I, I do believe we are still, uh, we are working with, uh, collections agency that is now, um. Uh, collecting on our behalf. So we are just gathering the information for the collections agency. So for those, uh, we will be chasing after them. We have identified some of the, the receivables that are very aged and we will be asking council to write those ones off just to clear them off the books. And, uh, to my knowledge, I don't know specifically who is on that list, but I do not know if there are counselors on that list or not at this time.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for that because yeah, if we could clean that up, it'd be a lot easier, right? So, perfect. Great to see that we have a collection agency looking after this. So, so that's, that's awesome. Any other questions? See you none. Thank you very much for your report. And we'll move on to, now. Uh. Director of Community and Protective Services. Any discussion regarding that report that anybody wants to ask? Anything? Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Uh, it was really great to see that there are fifty eight properties qualified for the small business tax. Um. Program. Uh, I think that's a great way that we are supporting small businesses in our community. And that there's a new welcome package available for new business owners. Um, who do we send? If we know of a business that's moved into our community or that's starting in our community, who do we send them to, to be able to access that package?
I think, uh, just in general, any emails like that or information to info at Athabasca County, then it gets to the right hands.
Uh, it was really great to see the kilometers included with the community transportation statistics this week, uh, this time. That was very nice. Thank you.
Counselor Hall.
I just wanted to draw attention to, because I know this sometimes gets missed, especially when, uh. You know, the reporting of our meetings happens, the twenty seven development permits issued in twenty twenty five, uh, surpasses, you know, any, uh. The, the four year average and last year and, uh. It's positive. And I think again, a demonstration that Athabasca County is a good place to do business and to live or to work. And, um, I, I would be curious how hard it would be to know what kind of dollars that represents in terms of development. Are they, is that? Is that fifteen million or is it something greater than that? But I know I wouldn't expect anyone to answer that off the top of their head, but every now and then. I think we have a really positive story to tell there and, um, and it's something we should celebrate that by the end of February. We're twenty seven permits already and, uh, and still, still lots of construction season left in the year.
Perfect. Um. Thank you. Uh. Reeve Holland.
Thank you. And thank you as well for your reporting. Um, it's, it's very thorough and detailed and I really appreciate that. I'll just quickly go through some of the items have already been mentioned around the table. Um, under, on page thirty eight, under enforcement services, it says the officers have returned to ten hour shifts, six days a week coverage. Um, just curious for the summer months, will that become seven day week coverage? Okay. And when does that begin? Um, I think it's middle of May, somewhere in there. Just before the law. So yeah, you'll see probably that in my next report. Okay, perfect. Awesome. Thank you. Um, page thirty nine, um, under fire services, working with Trident pumps to facilitate summer training. Is that for their, um, their pumping or is that? Just curious what that's all entails. That was direction given by council to, um. Reach out and do some training with their equipment so that, uh, you know, we have a better knowledge of how it may help us. Awesome. Thank you so much. Um, let's see here. The, uh, under emergency management, work continues on the Jackfish Lake DRP, uh, claim and land reclamation. Is the land reclamation included in the, uh, uh, the DRP claim or is that over and above? No, it'll be included. Okay, awesome. Um. Oh, just wanted to mention the, uh, celebrating world women's conference, um, as being, it was a huge success. It was an amazing conference that took place and, and kudos to all those who worked on it. And just on, on another note that I thought was really awesome, that a thousand dollars for Athabasca Cares and Angels in Motion was raised. So, you know, in, in adding those types of things to our conferences, I think this is a real bonus. So thank you for doing that. Um, and as, as mentioned by Counselor Anderson, the fifty eight properties that qualified for the small business tax, I had highlighted that as well. Um, I'm assuming a lot of that was attributed to those mailouts. So thank you for doing those as well. That communication really makes a huge difference. Um. The economic development microsite, do we have an ETA on a launch date on that? Um, it'll probably, like, it's, it's pretty much ready to go. So there's just a few things to fix up. So once our new websites landed, it'll be shortly thereafter. Oh, that's awesome. Okay. And just out of curiosity, and I don't know if you can tell me, but did we let you include a, a local business directory? It's something that we're actively working on. Oh, fantastic. Okay. Thank you so very much. And again, thank you as well, community transportation, to see those kilometers. Um, comparative, comparative to the trips is awesome. That's great information to have. And again, the development, I had also highlighted that as well. So under the development permits for twenty twenty five is fantastic. So well done. Thank you again for the good work you do.
Awesome. Um. Counselor Anderson.
We just missed, um. So we have a hundred and six fire permits issued year to date, twenty twenty five. And compared to thirteen year to date, twenty twenty four. And I just think it's incredible that uh, they're available on the website, that it's an easier process and that people are buying into getting those fire permits in advance. So kudos to your team for working with the community to make that happen.
Following up on the fire permit question, is there a reason we don't kind of list them on the website is these are the, like we do with development permits, these are the permits that are issued. Should we be listing fire permits as these are the permits that are issued? Because then when you see a gigantic fire, you can look and realize there's a permit, the county is aware of it and you can feel, uh, confident that somebody's going to be checking that burn come spring.
Um, well, that if the information is certainly shared with all of the regional chiefs. Um. The, or the district chief, sorry. Um. As far as, uh, sharing it publicly, I'm not sure. Uh, we'd have to look into that. Um. And the last piece was, yeah, all of the fire permits will be checked. That's actively happening right now.
Right. Thank you. Uh. Paul.
Sorry, I didn't flip my pages quick enough because poor FCSS is on the very end of the, under the end of the report. I just wanted to mention.
I just wanted to mention as well, looking through all of the files, the referrals um that they have open as well as the mentorships and um the hub coordinator, the family center, all of those services that are provided through the FCSS is amazing. They do incredible work over there. And just kudos to them as well.
Perfect. And on that note, uh oh, Counselor Gerlock.
I just wanted to mention something about fire permits. Was in here, I talked to Travis, I got a fire permit. I went home, I happened to see guys at the fire hall, so I stopped in. They already had notification that the fire permit was issued. And they were up with it and I contacted them the minute I struck the match and they were aware. I alerted all the neighbors. Everything went well and it's been inspected. Wes Nimco was out and inspected it and deemed it to be safe and out and cooled and it's perfect.
That's a that's a that's a great news story right on. Well, thank you for bringing that along.
One thing I've noticed this year was a lot more smoke signs off our highways and stuff. I don't, I just maybe I had never noticed before, but this year it surely seems like a bigger increase.
Or people burning. And actually adhering to the permits, so. So thank you for that. Any any anything else? Okay, that's thank you very much for that report. And yes, it does. So I guess we'll go into the go into the, I I guess the counselor updates first. So Counselor Cromwell, you want to take us off on that?
Thank you very much. Um, while I have the Director of Community and Emergency Services here, I'll get to this part first. One of the biggest things I'm hearing right now from residents is the feeling of being unsafe in our community. Uh, property crimes are up, break and enters are up. But especially with that the situation there a few weeks ago, people want to see enforcement out on our back road. They want to have patrols. They want to know that the county, the RCMP, the sheriff, that people are driving these random back roads and are not seeing enough enforcement. Being that this community is geographically isolated uh in comparison to other parts of our county. It would be very nice to have a huge increase in the number of patrols along these back roads and and residential areas. Uh, I have mentioned before, we do have some of the parking issues along that uh main street with big trucks that, you know, hopefully they can deal with while they're up there. But the big one is bringing that safety back to our residents, that that feeling that people are out there. That is, I'll leave that as my update for today.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Anderson, we're gonna hop, skip and jump here.
I feel like my last month has been spent preparing for RMA. So uh, it's nice that that's uh behind us. I'm hoping that not everybody came home with a copy of the flu that went around there. Um, but such an incredible experience to be at RMA and I think have you told uh our council at the first RMA that we went to, that when we walked in, you know, three or four years later, that we'd have recognized so many faces. Um, I don't think we truly could have believed it. Uh, just seeing the way that all of our council has networked and built connections on that provincial basis is really cool to see. And something that um our residents will never get to to see that part of what we've done, but it's truly a benefit to our community. So I really appreciate that. Other than that, I have to say kudos to the infrastructure department because they have been out steaming culverts. And I know yesterday they made me look really good somehow. They got to one, I think, within a couple hours of me sending the email and it was just the their magical timing, but uh, they're out there doing great work, so.
Very long. Well, thank you very much for that. Yep, no, that's great work that goes through with the public works there. Counselor Gerlock.
Yeah, there still remains a concern with, I think, you know what the concern is? That uh damper or whatever parked in the yard or people are very concerned with it. It doesn't seem to be going anywhere, but it it's kind of highlights the discussions around town. Other than that, not too much to report.
Counselor Hall. I think it um most of our reports will come in in writing, but as relates to RMA, a couple of the highlights I think are worth thinking about were the the really high quality session on recreational funding. Which when I left, you know, there were a lot of things to think about and it was really interesting to hear the the successes and the the ways that other municipalities are figuring out cost sharing. Um, and also the uh, you know, some presentations on rural economic development and and what's uh what's working. And you know, I think we've all understand the idea, we don't have to come up with the best ideas, we just have to find them and borrow them or or um take from from what others have done well and and apply that to uh to how we can apply to our own situation to to help improve things. So that and is all uh is all really valuable. And of course, the uh the premier's comments on her expectations for the potential impact of the April second tariff deadline. I know that's a changing uh minute by minute, but that was also good uh, good perspective that I think when you hear it directly from from the premier uh unfiltered by the news media, it was reassuring as well.
Thank you. Revolt.
Hello. Um, thank you. It's been busy uh as usual since our last um update. Um, just a quick notes on committees. So the town, county and municipal committee uh began and and that's been keeping us busy and and um I think is going to be an amazing uh committee going forward and and the accomplishments I I see that will be made will be very beneficial. Um, with regards to uh Athabasca Landing Trail Committee. Um, looking forward to the tour that's going to be taking place on Friday. It's the southern portion uh of the trail, so we will be touring from Fort Saskatchewan um through till uh to Twatna. Um, with a group, I believe there's about fourteen um people coming, so for the four municipalities as well as um uh Alberta Trailnet representatives and uh trail operator representatives. So I think it's going to be a great day. I'm looking forward to that. Um, we also had a a quick meeting uh before the army with regard with um Dr. Alex Clark and Dr. Catherine Swindelhurst with regards to um our RMA presentation. They provide us, provided us with RMA speaking notes, which I think is absolutely fantastic. And of course, with a highlight with the nurse nurse practitioner program that's uh happening at the Athabasca University. Um, and it's just so great to note that one in in three of the nurse practitioners are coming from that facility and uh is excellent um for our rural healthcare. So I think that that's uh an amazing, amazing work that they're doing out of there. Um, the RMA conference uh again was uh another great conference. Um, very fast paced as per usual. We all come back tired and so sick. So it's, you know, it's uh hard, hard to um to describe how busy that that those conferences are. And again, they put together some great um uh breakout sessions is what I'm looking for. And so that it was well attended a as you as per usual. I know it was interesting to to listen to the ministerial forum. Um, I also attended an S FCM hybrid meeting. Um, it was a gathering of the Western provinces and the territories and to discuss the impacts on municipalities. So that the FCM have a good list of what they can uh go back and advocate for. Um, we also uh had the army um directors and and president come and visit and and vice president come and visit, um which was excellent. Here we had four of us during that uh that time and it was uh we kind of looked at each other, where do we start? And it didn't take very long and we were definitely had that hour completed with all the topics to discuss. And of course, what impacts are happening in in our um area as well as what the army are advocating for. So it was a a really great discussion. I really appreciate them coming up. Um, with regards to the provincial hockey, I'd like to pass on that that uh tournament that was this past weekend was well done and well attended. It was absolutely packed in that multiplex. I don't think I've ever seen so many people in the multiplex. It was awesome. The Hawks did an amazing job and uh everyone put in great effort. So but congratulations to the provincial chaps, the foothill flyers out of the Littleton Lakewood uh region. Um, pretty excited uh to see them um and their win. So that was pretty awesome. Um, and with regards to um residents, always having conversations with the residents and and listening to their concerns and also their kudos. Um, there's been a lot of assessor type questions that are coming forward. So I'm looking forward to that presentation coming up on Thursday. Um, and mentioning to quite a few that they may wish to tune into that particular meeting. Um, it would definitely worth a while to to listen and hear what the assessors have to say uh coming up and um the kudos as well to um to Public Works for their quick responses. Um I understand there was a deer strike that I was notified about, um that there was concern and before you could blink, there was response. So um it we're seeing uh a lot of awesome work being done out there and the quick responses that are happening and residents are seeing it as well. So thank you so much for all that you do. And I'll leave it at that.
Awesome. Counselor Chamsik.
Uh, not a lot happening since our last meeting. I finished my certification at the RMA. Um lots of great networking, great breakout sessions there. Uh, things are melting, things are looking great in uh Division Seven, not getting any complaints. And as for today, it looks like spring's underway. We'll see later. Um, in the community, uh Atmore Hoofathon is officially canceled due to low enrollment. Uh, we had Shrove Tuesday in Prosveda. It was really busy, nicely attended, also had a church perby supper that helps support the Athabasca Ukrainian dancers. And Atmore will be having an AGM on the seventh of April. Uh, looking forward um to this Friday uh with the Athabasca Landing Trail, we're going to be doing the tour as Council Reeve Holland was uh mentioning. It's kind of interesting to see how um some of the other municipalities support the recreational trails in history. Uh, Friday was the Atmore Egg Fair, or sorry, the Grassland Egg Fair. It was a little bit lower in numbers, but uh had a large arrangement of vendors from Egg Drones, Crop Insurance. Um, the egg department was there from the Athabasca County analysis. Well, and that's all I have. Best pancakes I've ever had.
Counselor Wallack.
Uh, not much of uh some flooding in the north, but uh per usual. Um, yeah. And uh RMA was awesome. It was just really good sessions this year. Um do you want to thank council for the donation to the Ukrainian Dance Club's fiftieth anniversary? Um, they have sold out above and beyond what they expected and it's probably going to be one of the biggest events held at the multiplex um in April, so um, it'll be a good time.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. Uh, yes, it is going to be a huge celebration on that. Busy month I've I've had uh uh stealing some of the the Reeves uh report, uh IMC meeting, council meetings, meeting with AU regarding uh their their uh asks and that and and getting better information. Army Conference was was good. Um Tenor to Yield EP course. Slowly getting through that. Congratulations, Counselor uh Chamsik on your your uh receiving your certificate. And I find these uh reports to me are getting to be more of of celebrating, celebrating what uh what has happened around uh Athabasca County region and that. And I was honored to give uh greetings on behalf of Athabasca County at the U fifteen provincials. The the provincial committee, uh hosting committee did an outstanding job. Can't believe the jobs that they did. They worked hard. They many, many uh uh hours put in, volunteer hours by themselves and by their parents and by family and by friends. It's it was amazing. Uh provincial thing to go through. Lots of kudos from from uh teams from across Alberta on on what a great conference was put on. So hats off to them. We even actually had a I shouldn't say we, uh through the provincials, uh there was one team that actually uh resided in in grassland. Cause all the hotels were sold out here. One one back drove back to Westlock. So it'd be it'd be great to have more hotels, but so when I see the region, uh people went out across the region. So and I I guess the biggest celebration is I became a crapper again. So on on Friday. So thank you for that. Uh, torn Dorsey O'Neil. Uh, born March twenty first, nine oh eight AM or PM, uh eight eight pounds, eight ounces, big boy. So another hunter. So here we go. So thank you for that and and uh I don't know if lunch is lunch is, we're still waiting. Okay, so so we're not going to take a break. We will move on. I think uh if everybody's okay with that, we'll move on to um seven point one. Take it away.
All right. Good morning. I'm gonna just do a quick presentation on uh some building condition assessments that we completed uh last year. So um in the beginning of twenty twenty four, we did do uh building condition assessments for uh they were completed by metaphor uh for the public workshop and the West Wing shop. Uh, so that was part of that new uh shop project that we did in twenty twenty four. Um, and that overview was presented to council at the end of May. Um, and then also in twenty twenty four, we uh went with McQuig Associates and Engineering Limited to carry out BCS on another thirty three county owned buildings. Um, and we received those reports just right at the end of twenty twenty four there. Um, and then both of those projects were um properly RFP'd, went out for request proposals. There we go. Um, so for the McQuig reports, um each report that we got does give a yearly estimated cost of work um for each of the next ten years, so twenty twenty five to twenty thirty four to maintain the buildings. They're really rough estimates. It's a plus or minus fifty. So more of an order of magnitude estimate. Um, and then the timing of work of which year they put it in based was based on various factors. Um, including some code compliance in some of the cases. Um, so I have uh some slides coming up. There are summaries based on the type of building and they just show the twenty twenty five estimated cost, uh the five year and then ten, ten year. Um, just directly from the reports. Um, the total for all of these thirty three buildings that they did is uh about half a million uh this year. Um, which we actually do have budgeted as a capital project. And then um the five years is four point one million and the ten year is six point three million. Um, as I said, it's a plus or minus fifty in order of magnitude. Uh, we have just started getting quotes. Um, so this is based on their their numbers. It hasn't been updated. We haven't done the internal um vetting based on. Um, so yeah, the first one is fire halls. Um, uh, the costlier, you can see wandering river um is the costliest for twenty twenty five. And um some of the costier items there are that wall to slab separation investigation that needs to occur. Um, the there needs to be garb rails put in for the stairs of mezzanine. Um, there's some protective coating required for the concrete and they also suggest uh to do an HVAC study there. Um, and then just over the ten year period, I just put out grassland fire hall actually has the largest cost over ten years.
On that, no, what what would be the largest, like like why, why is there a large cost to grassland?
Uh, I would have to grab that particular one. Um, I I know it like I'm pretty sure the HVAC study was required from for most of them. So there'd be that for sure. Um, but yeah, I'd have to go back and grab that report and I could I could provide that information.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Cromwell.
Thank you. And forgive me, I had to had to step out for a moment and you might have addressed it, but I just have to double clarify. When looking at the items for the wandering river hall, you have the separation, the sinkhole under the bay. Has anything been planned or done for that asbestos leak that we were told in twenty twenty two was going to be sealed? We were going to have a wall put up, we were going to have things done and that never happened. And there are still issues with that building and leakage that we've been waiting on. And there are still issues with that building and leakage that we've been waiting on building studies. And we're told it would happen time and time again, but has not. Any information on that? That would definitely be a project.
So I wasn't here when they did that, but I have reviewed those studies and I thought that they were that they was dealt with, the asbestos. These ones for anything that they've suggested, where they are doing any sort of work, they have suggested making sure that we bring in the appropriate people to make sure that asbestos isn't released. So any renovations, they have suggested bringing in the appropriate.
Okay, yeah, back in 21, the holes were filled with foam. But we were, it was not, it was a patch job, it was not a repair job. Director, intern, CEO Phillips, the time, had organized a another wall basically be put up over top of the cinder block to keep everything enclosed. And then it went to sealing all the walls, getting a professional painter sealer in there to get all the walls done. But none of those projects have ever happened. And the only remedy is by putting holes in for foam in the holes they could find at the time. So definitely still a concern.
We'll look into it. We did provide them with the reports from that time, McQuaid, so I'll go back and look, but I'm the next one's water, so just potable water and wastewater. So grassland is the costliest one in 2025. Some of the items there is repairing the drywall. Again, there they're requiring that hazmat analysis, as we just discussed, for potential with asbestos. HVAC study and replacing the concrete apron. The grassland water distribution does have the highest cost over the next 10 years as well. Recreation and airport is next. It's not really costly in 2025 at all. The airport terminal does have the largest cost over the 10 next 10 years and for the airport. And then for far living quarters is the largest for recreation over the next 10 years.
Counselor Anderson.
Can you explain more about these projects, like for far living quarters? What are your intentions with that project? Because for $114,000, is it worth
Rights.
repairing versus replacement?
Right, so these, that's why I said some of these things need to be vetted. This is just presenting exactly how McQuaid has presented it and theirs is replacement in kind. So that's why at the beginning I said, we're going to have to first also quote out these things ourselves because I can give you an idea, we started to post some of the things and some of them were much more expensive, some of them were much cheaper. So there's that. And then also we have to vet them if we're, if they actually are, if we are going to do them, right? So that still needs to be done. This is just exactly how McQuaid has presented it to us.
So for each of these buildings that they looked at, there's a long list of items that they've identified. As an administration, we'll go through all of those. And we may not even agree with what some of their priorities were and how they've placed them. So we just wanted to give council, I guess, an overview of what the report said. It it's not insignificant amount of money that we're talking about. So we felt we would at least give you a summary of kind of what that looked like, so.
Yeah, and regarding the the Forfar one, because I have it down here also, and it, a lot of it is this is that one in the in the Hope Lake one was bought at the same time and everything. Forfar has been hammered on pretty hard over the years by people borrowing stuff from it and took a that has happened there, so there's an understanding of of what, why that's more expensive. Counselor Hall. Can you just clarify the airport terminal, is that the hangar that we own that's there or is that a different building?
No, correct, that's the hangar.
Is that a building that we need to own in the long term?
I guess you'll decide.
I questioned it when we bought it, but it does, it is actually a valuable source for for parking equipment in when we don't have other areas to be able to do it in, so.
So the next slide is the agriculture truck fills. So again, we don't really have any costly items at these. New Pine Creek has the largest cost over the next 10 years.
I was just wondering about, and hopefully you're not, I'm okay with cutting in, but but I'm just wondering about New Pine Creek. I think that thing was rebuilt in, I think it was 2019. All of a sudden ended up on the ground in a pile of rubble one day. And so I wonder what, why that one's costing so much.
Again, I could go back and get the more detailed information. And again, we definitely need to vet what they're asking for and is it even worth it? I mean, these are very small buildings, so would we just replace the building? If we're up at 38,000 over the next 10 years, right? So.
Perfect, thank you.
So some of the miscellaneous buildings, 2025 is quite costly for the Collington Storage Post Office. We need to replace the roofing on the original section. And then also 2025 is pretty costly for the Rochester Old Fire Hall. It's saying to replace the shingles, the soffit, the gutters and downspouts. They're in very poor condition. And then the administration building has the highest cost of any building in this whole report over the next 10 years. So then, as I said, Metaphor did the reports earlier in the year on the Public Works and the West Wing Shop. These reports only give an overall cost for the architectural items. They broke it out for site structure, mechanical, electrical and life safety items. And most work is suggested to be immediate or within the next five years. They didn't do a one to 10-year thing. And they're, they also noted code compliance issues as well in their reports.
Counselor, also at home. Sorry, I didn't get my hand up quickly enough when you were talking about the miscellaneous buildings. But so the question really is, as as you're looking through those and all of the buildings, are any of, is any of this work related to improving the energy efficiency in the buildings as we go? Like I'm, as as a counselor from the beginning, I've been concerned about this nasty habit we have of replacing old technology with old technology, which might make sense if you have, you know, if you're a business with a finite life. But it's the municipality has a long future. And we can look at much longer payback periods and smarter choices. Are we looking at doing things better? So instead of just replacing with like for like, are we going to make the insulation better? Are we going to make them cheaper to run so that we can make a smart investment and pass on that benefit in terms of our operating costs going forward?
Yep, that's, I mean, that's definitely something we're going to have to consider for each project that we look at. But they haven't considered that. When they're considering their cost, their plus or minus 50%, it's to replace whatever it is.
That's not, none of that's.
That is not in the reports.
Because I mean, the grassland water fill is a good example of a whopping energy hog that you know, there is something wrong there. I think I could heat a grainer for less money than that with natural gas.
So just an example, like one of the ones is they're saying replace the shingles, right? I mean, is shingles the best option for that? Not likely, right? Are there other things we can do? You know, even to get 10 years out of it by spraying it, like there's lots of different things that we'll be looking at. And long-term shingles are probably not the right answer for the building, so. Thank you for your comments, but their report does not take any of that into consideration. That would be administration who would be applying those philosophies.
So the first one, the public workshop, the overall estimate is 1.82 million. That's about 60,000 of structure, the architectural is almost 800,000, mechanical 291, electrical 410, life safety and fire protection 190, and then other was 76. As I said, it wasn't broken down year by year nicely. It was like either immediate, within the next five years kind of thing more on in these reports. So we are still currently going through them right now to determine the immediate needs for 2025.
So just this is the existing buildings?
Correct.
Just can you help us given the size of the dollars here? What what items are included in the architectural?
Basically everything.
Because I mean, those are steel frame superstructure, right? So what?
Yeah, I I mean, I can get you more of it, but yeah, I mean, they they literally looked at at doors, walls, ceilings. They found problems with most things.
There is leaks that, you know, when you go into the coffee room upstairs.
Come on.
You know, the stockers falling off the ceiling, it bubbled. I mean, there's the repairs, my understanding is that the leaks have been repaired. So it's not getting any worse, but they're
Due to the leak.
It needs some attention.
Yeah, due to the leaks is is no, no damage underneath of what can't be seen. So I can see the architectural end of it being looked at pretty heavily.
It's everything from doors opening the wrong way was one of the things I've seen in there. It's a fire door that opens the wrong direction, so it would have to be completely replaced, taken out and put in. Lack of handrails on stairs. It really does, it's cover a really wide range of items.
So then the West Wing Shop, the overall estimate was 1.26 million. And that's the architectural was 750, mechanical 166, electrical 182, life safety and fire protection was 142 and other was about 24,000. And this is the same as the public works, we're working through each item to determine immediate needs. On this building. The site work, the overall estimate is 825,000. There's 30,000 for site access. There's like 15,000 that they put to drainage and then the grading is 680 and I just noted that could be easily done internally. Oh, and I didn't, I missed the 100,000 for sanitary CCTV there. Same as the other two, we are working through this to determine any immediate needs. That is it.
I I guess at the beginning, and I don't know, maybe you said why or or what, or there's six buildings that weren't assessed?
Yeah, so those are on county-owned land with halls and centers that have nonprofits in them. And we're actually meeting with them in the next couple of weeks to kind of determine path forward, so.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Go ahead. So you can see by this and the fact that we're going to be bringing the bridge one to you, hopefully within the next couple of weeks. We're really just trying to give you some information of, you know, as we go down the road of asset management. Asset management's expensive and there's a reason that people ignored it for a while. But some of the numbers are going to be shocking, especially when we talk about bridges and buildings, right? All of them are 50, 60 years old, they're near the end of their life cycles. And you know, they all come to the one little window of time where they're expiring or end of life. Our job now is to try and come up with a plan to take all those and extend the envelope a little bit until we can afford to deal with the significant challenges that we're going to have over the next 10 to 15 years. But we want to keep you in in the loop of what we're looking at. You know, obviously, there's going to be a huge amount of administrative changes to some of the reports that come in. You know, they're they're hired to do an evaluation at a snapshot in time. We can kind of move some of those priorities around and look at different technologies and stuff of that nature. That kind of falls on us and council, so. More than anything, we just wanted to kind of give you, you know, what some of this stuff's going to cost moving forward in that probably going to eat some money.
I I'm I'm gonna say it probably, or I'm gonna say it on behalf of County Council. We thank you very much, just due to the fact that we've been asking for for something like this and knowing, knowing that we needed something like this. Because we we buildings are not new. We we have some new buildings and that and and it's an understanding, you don't let your house fall down around you also, right? Things need to be repaired, need to be maintained, stuff like that. So so thank you very much for this report and with the understanding that, yeah, there there's a lot more to dig into. But you start putting, do you put million eight into a building that that you know what, maybe you should spend a little bit more money and actually build it. So and and it's good information for the ratepayers of Athabasca County to understand where we're at. So thank you again for that, because there's going to be some reasons we need extra money. Thank you very much.
Counselor Hall.
Do you happen to have a total of what all these lines add up to? I didn't take the time to. Because I I mean, to me, this this again demonstrates that we can't let up on savings and we can't let up on reserve contributions. The needs are great, but I I'm just wondering if you've kind of known.
So the one was one about 1.8, 1.2, so we're at three, then 6.3, so almost, almost 10, almost 10 million, almost 10 million.
And that's just facilities.
Yeah, that's just, and it's like we talked about, you mentioned, that's the bare minimum. You know, just to keep things kind of in their current form and function. No major upgrades and the good news is, is you implemented the first year of a $500,000 commitment to facilities. So we're close to being at that annual requirement over 10 years. So council jumped in and said, we need to do it and you started this year, which is fantastic, but it is. As Director Mort said, we've got one coming on bridges and as we add these things up, eventually we will have a reserve plan to you. And how bad the picture is, we're just not there, but we'll get there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that, Reeve Hall.
Thank you. Thank you very much for bringing this forward. Like you mentioned, it's something we've been waiting to see and considering that at one point we did have, and and just go back way back. But at one point, when we were still school board and county, we had an in-house maintenance crew and I really miss that crew. Because it's, you know, made a big difference in how facilities were maintained and looked after. And when you let things go, we end up paying in the long run. However, again, as as CAO mentioned, we knew that this was coming and started preparing for it. And so it's not as scary to me as it may look in the big picture, but over 10 years, it's it's just not as scary as as what it may look like right now because of that preparation. So I appreciate council for doing that and for administration for mentioning it to come forward. And I think it should goes goes without saying. Thank you very much for also looking into those safety priorities and I'm sure that they will be, you know, you know, something that's looked after right away. It's what goes without saying, so thank you. It's a pile of work that you've done and there's still a pile of work left to do, but this is, this high level aspect is is fantastic to have, so much appreciated.
Any any other discussion? Well, I I think you've been told thank you enough, but thank you again. And I think we're going to break for lunch. We'll be back. I don't know, give us 25 minutes, be back at 22:01. We'll be back, uh, I don't know, give us uh, twenty five minutes, be back at twenty two one.
So we may as well come back online. We're there. So. Did councillor Hall leave us, or is he still here? He had to go, okay. No, that's okay. And also, Gurlow will be joining us soon, so we may as well. Fire up here again. Welcome back, and we will go into the. Uh, what are we going in here? Seven point two, the draft. Twenty twenty five, twenty seven communications strategic plan, page seventy five. And on that note, I guess we will. Turn it over to. The director and. Let us have it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of committee. I'm glad that my sidekick has joined me here because we'll be presenting this together to you. We're very pleased to finally have a strategic communication plan over to you. This was highlighted in your strategic plan. And and this has actually been done about a year ago. Jordan had prepared this. And as you know, we went to the public and to staff for some feedback, and we've now incorporated what we heard into the plan. So I just want to recognize Jordan for all the work that he's done to preparing this. You know, he did the majority of the work. I just added some pretty elements to it. You can just go to the next one. So just to explain really quickly what a communication strategy is, it is just to help. Help us engage with all of our target audiences, and. It establishes our communication goals, outlines outlines our channels available to reach our audience and explore some tactics and. Ensures that we measure our performance. You'll recognize your pillars from your strategic plan, and under each pillar, we've highlighted some areas where communication can enhance. In delivering the messages that you want to bring out to the public. So just to summarize what we're planning, what we strive to do through the communication plan is to guide us in creating and sharing key messages. Support the goals in your strategic plan. Serve to informing residents about county services and initiatives. Recognize the importance of open and two-way communication practices and utilize modern technology and stay on top of trends as they. Come about. So part of this plan too is to align to the core values that we've identified, and. The first one is to ensure that our information is factual. At least we need to be verifiable, and it needs to be objective. With no opinions, it's just straight facts. We need to make sure that our messaging is easy to understand, and it's clear and it's audience specific. And also, the information is not retractable. That is, it must be accurate and carefully considered before making it public. So we need to be. We just need to be really confident in the information that we're sharing out there. So we recognize we won't be retracting any information because we need to be hundred percent confident before it goes out to the public. Needs to be timely and relevant. It needs to be meaningful and appropriate for the audience that we're trying to reach. And communication and messaging is to be accessible. That is, we want to share information across various platforms and devices. And again, that's using all of the tools that we have. In our toolkit to get information out to the public. And lastly, communications must work in respect to the FOP Act. And be compliant to all applicable laws, regulations, and policy. This is the foundation to building a trust and accountability in our interactions. I'm gonna turn it over to Jordan now. He's going to be speaking about what we heard through our surveys.
So we wanted to have both internal and external input inputs to help guide the creation of this document to ensure that the choices. That we are implementing are going to work best for the community. So as you remember, we did the internal and external communication survey. So from preferred communication channels from our residents that we found from our external survey. We found that social media, mail, and website are our top three areas where people are getting their information. Voyant alerts at number four, and voyant alert is still very important because we're using that for emergency communications. It's immediate and it's direct, and so that's going to still be a major tool in our toolbox. A lot of our tactics consider the top three. Choices. We've also noticed recently that the mail out has been very effective. For example, the small business tax incentive got a lot of uptake after we mailed out to small businesses in the area. The Baptiste Drive and Pack Beach Drive had a lot of people return back to us, and that was great for decision making. We sent out dust control reminders and signed ups to previous applicants, so there were those happening again. And just general information such as the sewage line information that we sent to all our utility users recently. And this is our preferred organizational communications that we got from our internal survey. The preferences. Pretty much are what we expected. County email supervisors and group meetings are the top way people would like to get their information. So for big picture slash company wide information, the county email is the preferred information sharing. Although for specific information, especially for specific departments, it's best shared directly by supervisors or within their peers. We have a good team here. People like to work together and just getting information directly from. Your team is the best way to do what we think. Now, the communication plan has three different goals, which are cultivating a well-informed understanding of county programs and services. Fostering two-way communication and building the communications process. In the actual plan, we go into a lot more detail in the strategies. But for the first goal, it boils down to the information just needs to be easy to understand. For fostering two-way communication, it needs to be timely, and we need to be responsive with feedback. And in building the communication process, we need to be proactive rather than reactive with all the information that we're sharing. I moved that there, okay. So just for a couple examples of some proposed improvements that we will be doing, we're going to be rolling out a new website and training staff. To update the content to ensure it's timely, and as we discussed earlier, that's happening tomorrow, which we're very excited about. We're going to be expanding on our social media presence. By targeting more posts a day with more just informational stuff such as, did you know, posts regarding our different departments? The be prepared information that Alberta government sends out and just a lot more informational commercially neutral information. We're going to improve our quarterly newsletter by building a staff information sharing network, and we're going to explore mail out versions of that. Some more eyes get on there. We're going to build our inventory of visuals and presentation materials to promote the county. This is already actually been worked on. I'm working with our deputy fire chief to get more pictures of our. Firehalls in trainings. We have a lot more stuff that we can work with in recruitment drives and just. More pictures of our people doing great stuff. And we're going to be going out to all the campgrounds this summer to get some updated photos, since the ones we have are a little bit dated. Annually, we're going to be serving, we're going to continue our annual survey of residents and staff to gauge the satisfaction of the communications process. This is going to be a living document that we're going to be constantly updating and changing as technology moves forward, as we get feedback. It's important that we get this feedback, and we have the opportunity to explore new engagement message methods to increase this participation. And finally, we're going to increase internal communications and explore distribution and internal newsletter. We're also going to be actively looking for department liaisons within each department. Having a specified person that communications can reach out to to get information from each department is going to make it a lot simpler to. Get the information out there. And we will track this information. These are our main tools of tracking, so we'll be doing analytics through our social media and our websites. Participation rates through surveys, open houses, any other engagement opportunities that we will do. As well as tracking how often that we are being mentioned in media, how many press releases are going out, and whether these articles are gaining traction. Technology is constantly expanding, and we're staying up to date on new ways that we can analyze and share this information. And I would like to hand it over to the chair if council has any questions.
Thank you very much for that. Yeah, I think. Again, we've been, we've been looking forward to. To getting this. Getting this. Information from from you, and great job, great job there, Jordan, so. Um, any. Also, Johnson.
I have some comments. I think that's awesome. It's great to see that. I know one of the things that. I think is really important that voyant alert is also utilized tool. Out of curiosity, with some of that thing in the future, is there like a possibility of doing more geo-based? Voyant alerts, like if there's a bridge out that type of thing, if that's within the plan or not?
Absolutely, and I think we actively do that as well. So we, if we have. Information that is going to be very specific, just to kind of one little area, we do send that out because. If there's, it's only going to affect people within a thirty kilometer area. There's no point of sending it to the other side of the county. So we are doing more geolocation options in our messaging with that as well.
That's really wonderful to hear. That's awesome. And I guess the only other thing that. A couple of things that I, you know, we hear is, or at least I hear as councillor of things that people would like to see that type of thing. Is one of the things that have been brought up a couple of times in the last three and a half years is, you know, besides going through our budget list of all of our services, just having something, you know, maybe within the communications. Strategy is to hyperlink to those departments, you know, whether it be an FCSS, community transportation, county library, whatever. And I guess the only other thing that I feel that is really important that we should be. Looking at to try to pump out more regularly is. One of the issues, I don't know, at least I see it, is we always have the issue when it comes down to our members at large, you know, just. Having that continuous, you know, whether they be coming up for. Our renewal or whatever, just having it in our faces more, I think, would be perhaps a benefit draw for residents to maybe want to join some of those boards. I seen that in your. Report. I can't remember what the heck it was called. How to be involved or something. I thought maybe that would be a place to fit it in. This is amazing work, and this is awesome to see really great job.
Thank you for that. Remind?
Oh, I'm sorry. Echo, exactly. This has been awesome and another and a very well anticipated report to come. So thank you so much for doing this. Huge work. Amazing ideas, strategies that we're seeing. The one thing that I did notice, of course, as you mentioned in your report, that social media is a huge. Factor for people to go to for communication. However, I'm glad to see that the mail outs are something that's going to continue because of our demographic here. There are so many people who still do not do social media at all. They don't even do email, or for that matter, the internet. So I'm so glad to hear that mail outs are going to be a preferred method. And other than that, I'm just looking forward to seeing it all play out. So thank you so much for all you've done.
Perfect councillor Cromwell. On Zoom.
Great presentation, Mr. Engelberg. I appreciate that. One of the things that I would like.
I think you need to find a hill.
How's that?
There you are.
Okay. Quick recap, but thank you. Great presentation. One of the things I would, I think would be great to see going to. Mail out and have accountable for repairs. Looking at even our reports from today was fire permit information and get the regulations out there, but also include a map.
Councillor Walk.
I'm just wondering if you have an age demographic for each of the communications breakouts, like. Did you guys ask that question during your survey?
Um, I think it was included in the. Surveys that we did, which we presented previously. I don't know if I have that in front. Oh, did we have that in front of me? Oh, my gosh. One second, let me see if I can find that.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, so the. Majority is between the ages of thirty and forty nine, and fifty to sixty four is the next second afterwards. And it just gets down to single digits after, but that's also just the people who completed our survey, but we are looking at more of. Thirty and up range.
Just as a thought, a lot of thirty and under don't use Facebook anymore. Yes, that's true. Engaging in other social media is. There is a large population of youth in the area, so somehow to reach those guys.
What, what do they use? Oh, my God. Oh my God. Councillor Anderson.
I agree. There's a lot of people that don't use Facebook anymore. Uh. Just wondering if you have analytics on. The newsletters that you send out, like the council highlights and how many people are subscribed and how often they're open, like what's your?
Uh, so as of right now, I know first subscribers, we only have about six hundred people signed up for it. Um. In terms of opening it. Like I don't have the exact number, so I'm going to just be guessing off of like the last one I said, but it seems about half of those people end up opening them. And only about half of those half like read through the entire thing.
Is there an opportunity to expand on that newsletter uh, communication to. Maybe include like our news and notices, like a weekly kind of highlights?
Absolutely. We're, we're exploring new ways to expand this moving forward as well. So we're going to be trying a couple of different things.
Okay, thank you. Um. I'm subscribed to, I know Sturgeon County has a really incredible newsletter that. Probably costs them an arm and a leg to do, but uh, I've heard great things about stuff like that, so.
Mister Chairman, but ideas from other locations. You're going to see that in future budgets. Uh, that's the whole point to this is, um, you know, so some of the ones that. We're spending a lot of time looking at, like, there's a couple that. They have quarterly newsletters to every resident. Well. Maybe that's a big leap for us, but maybe we could start with uh, semi-annually, at least twice a year with. Here's everything the council wants to do for construction for next year and, and get that out there and then include a. One, an article on our FCSS department or something. Here's what's going on. Um. We're just talking an awful lot about some of the mailout stuff that seems to be so effective. Um, and it just, yeah, there's a cost, but there's a cost to not keeping your residents informed.
Yeah, exactly. I totally agree with that. If, if uh, go right to the source, right? Get it right to them and, and, and it helps out. Uh, councillor Cromwell, you were there, now you're gone. I don't know.
Let me see if you can hear me now.
Okay.
All right. I put my comment in the chat, but recap here. What I think would be great for residents to get is an actual bit of mailout on the fire permit. System, the requirements and how they go about getting that. If you look at the report from the director today, a huge influx of. Fire permits and compliance. I think that would be great to actually pass that information on, on what is required for a permit, what activities need to be permitted. And go one step further and include a map of the green zone and the white zone. So people know if they go to the county, if they go to the government of Alberta. And how to ensure that uh, we have that compliance and to be know what fires are actually burning within our border. I think that would be a great thing to add to our mailout and to our social media.
Uh, through the chair to council Cromwell, I completely agree and I've been actively discussing with our deputy to fire chief on how we can get fire permanent information out uh, relatively soon.
Perfect. Well, thank you. Any other questions regarding this presentation? So I think there's a. A motion. Who have knowledge to. That the committee accept the twenty twenty, twenty-five, twenty-seven communications strategic plan as presented and slash amended and. And request that it be brought to a future council meeting for final approval. Who wants to? Councillor Gerlock is making that uh. Right on. He's making that recommendation. Uh, okay.
I don't think we had any amendments, did we, to this?
Uh, no.
No. Okay, so it would just be as presented. Okay, thank you.
You betcha. So. Call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, that would be seven and oh. And thank you for that. Thank you very much. Um, regional collaboration, community attraction, engagement and working group, seven point three, page ninety-eight. So. I guess, oh, go ahead, Councillor Johnson.
Uh, yeah, this is excellent. Um, having one representative, I'd like to nominate Reeve Holland as the county council representative.
Okay, um. Any other discuss, I guess you accept the nomination. Okay, any other, go ahead, Councillor Anderson.
Just wondering what the budget is for this uh. Committee and if they're expecting us to contribute.
Uh, go ahead.
Um, this was brought up in the intermunicipal committee meeting uh, with the town and the county. And from my understanding, there is no budget. Um, there is no need for a budget and it is um. Quarterly uh, meetings, so it's uh. Sounds to me like a really good initiative to um, get this going and uh, not have any financial burden on taxpayer.
Councillor Gerlock.
So what does makeup, the committee have, who all is involved?
It's, yeah, it's listed on the. It's, it's listed on page ninety-nine.
Oh.
LP, one LP, one. I didn't see it. One Athabasca University, one Austin View School Division Representative, one Alberta Healthcare Services Representative, one RCMP Representative, one Town Council, one Village of Boyle. And one County Council Representatives. Oh yeah, and on the second page is uh, one MD of Opportunity Representative. And others as determined. I think it's to get the committee up and. Out there, uh, get together and then they can decide. Then they can decide on uh, if they want any other members or. And uh, yeah, there is no, no budget or nothing. It's, it's just a. I think it was just kind of like get together for a coffee right off the hop and try to figure this out. So. Oh, Councillor Walk.
Not sure if this is a lot, but I would like to put my name forward for this committee. Um, sitting on Alberta Hub, this correlates very highly with what they're doing um, at a larger scale. So um, being involved in economic development for the last three years, committees and stuff, I think. I would be a good voice for the committee.
Okay, so. I guess uh. Would, would not, like, do we have a vote or, or do we uh? Yeah. The two councillors that aren't here, but that's, I guess. So can't mean everything. So I guess, how do we want to do this? Show of hands or? Okay, everybody in agreement of that? Do it at council? I'm fine. Okay, I'm fine with that too. You betcha. We can kick her to council and know that we have two, two people that want to. Jump in there. So, uh, everybody okay with that? So. We will, do we need a motion to recommend to council? Uh, the regional community collaboration, attention, attraction and engagement group. To pick a community member or, or to appoint a member of council. So that. Sequester everything. And I think we got it. So all in favor?
Aye.
So that is seven and oh. Motion carried. So let's move on to the next thing, which is Alberta Forest Products Association Delegation, seven point four. Uh, recommendation to receive delegation for information and to recommend to county council to authorize the Reeve to send the advocacy letter as requested. Uh, Reeve Holland?
Thank you. Um, I think that this would be a great letter to send. Um, as the example that has been provided, the only change that I would make um, is uh, who we would carbon copy and I would like to include both our MLAs. Um, at the bottom of that letter as well. Should council decide that they would like to send it.
Okay. And I, I don't think we need that in the motion, right? Do we? I think it'll be carbon copy. Yeah, we'll get that figured out. So. Who's, you're making a motion?
Sure.
Okay, so. Uh, Reeve Holland to receive the delegation for information, recommend to county council authorize Reeve to send a advocacy letter to as requested. So. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, seven and oh. Take a motion. Are we going into? Oh, yeah. Nothing close. Holy math. Okay. Well, thank you, everybody for great meeting and uh, meeting adjourned.